Goodyear City Council, 10th September 2007. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation led by Councilmember Osborne.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we gather together today to ask for joy amongst our countries, love amongst your people, and healing of our spirits. We lift up our city and ask for your divine grace. We bring to you our citizens and our city staff, and we ask for your blessings upon them. We raise up this council and seek your wisdom, nobility, and integrity. May our staff and this council bring forth innovation, conservation, and regional togetherness. We pray for Frank and Jamie Cavalier as they go through their hardship of losing a left one. Lastly, as we look upon the anniversary of September 11th, may we see continual healing, strength amongst our peoples, and may we see a softening of the enemy's heart with your son's loving touch. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Antoniak has bronchitis, and as we just mentioned, Councilmember Cavalier's father-in-law passed away. Could I have a motion to excuse them, please?
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Susan, a second from Councilmember Lord. All those in favor signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Close the ayes at five zero. There are no expenditures to ratify. We do have one communication item on our agenda, and that's a briefing on leadership conference. And Laura Hillibrands will lead us off on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Mr. Carlos Ramos and his son Esteban. They have a few words they would like to share with you. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here to personally say thanks for having a part to do in my son's trip to Washington on July 30th to August 4th. He is here to express his gratitude in what he did over there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today I'm going to tell you about my trip to Washington DC. And on my trip with Junior NYLC, I went to Maryland, Philadelphia, Virginia, West Virginia, and Washington DC. I participated in icebreakers with the other students and received an introduction to the different leadership concepts that we solve, respect, and teamwork. I also worked with my group to set goals for the week and wrote a group constitution. I boarded a bus for a day trip to Philadelphia to examine firsthand the events, leaders, and values that led to the exploration of the site of Independence Hall and presentations and exhibits. At the National Constitution Center, I investigated the critical factors surrounding the Declaration of Independence. In exploring this rich historical period, I focused on the ways in which the US Constitution influences life in the United States and how we as citizens influence the Constitution. Returning to Washington DC, in the evening, I convened with my LFG to engage in a First Amendment simulation. This fictional scenario asked me to weigh the rights of students to wear peace patches in school to advocate for increased community policing against the distraction that the patches would cause. Employing my communication skills, I staked out a position on the issue and debated and negotiated with my fellow scholars. I traveled to Harper's Ferry located at the junction of Potomac and Shenandoah Rivers. Now a national park, this beautiful area was the site of abolitionist John Brown's daring and ultimately unsuccessful raid on a federal armory in 1859. I, along with park rangers dressed in historical garb, engaged in a variety of simulations that mimicked life in America during the years leading up to the Civil War. I participated in military drills. The scholars also, we also examined Brown's life story and discussed my leadership characteristics. I studied the challenges I faced and then debated my actions. I investigated the legacy of leadership in a series of site explorations of some of Washington DC's most important historical sites. After walking discovery of the seat of our country's legislative branch, Capitol Hill, I explored the Korean War Veterans Memorial, Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and World War II Memorial, and stopped for a photo opportunity at the White House. We also visited the reopened National Portrait Gallery, which houses nearly 20,000 works of art featuring men and women who have made significant contributions to the history, development, and culture of the United States. At each of these sites, I learned how leaders use their voice to take a stand and make a difference. In the evening, I worked with my LFG members to create a social organization to serve as their own voice of change for a special topic that impacts local communities. This final project tasked me with using the new leadership skills I have developed at Junior NYLC that week. I polished my newfound leadership skills with a presentation and discussion of my LFG social project. In the evening, I watched Shackleton's Antarctic Adventure, an IMAX movie about Sir Ernest Shackleton's trans-antarctic journey. I ended the night with a sleepover at the Maryland Science Center. Over just a few short days, I had seen national monuments, explored historic Philadelphia, experienced the story of John Brown at Harper's Ferry, participated in historical reenactments, and delved into key leadership concepts. But Junior NYLC is only one step in my leadership journey. The Junior National Young Leadership Conference, Eliminate Boston Program, is the next stage for me enhancing and developing the skills I learned that week now that I have successfully completed Junior NYLC. Good evening, thank you.
it to us. You were a busy family for a couple of years. But you know, I expanded, didn't I? And that's really what you think we wanted, so that's great. But you know, just to be selected for that, it's a matter of course. So congratulations from all of us. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you.
Mayor, Georgia and I would like to know what Esteban's favorite thing was.
Um, I actually like to look at and store the place on Washington DC, like the White House.
It's kind of cool being there and not just seeing it on TV or anything, huh? Very good.
I'd just like to say one thing. I'd like to congratulate the parents.
Very good.
This day and age, with all the, all the stuff that's out there, trying to raise a child, it is very difficult. And I just congratulate you on raising this great citizen.
I want to thank you also for the patriotism that you've extended to your son. That's important in this day and age to have youngsters such as his age to realize what this country's about. And I think that his interest has fulfilled his ability to understand what this country's all about. I really enjoyed hearing about your trip. Mr. Smith went to Washington. Mr. Ramon, I think you did definitely well. I think you did definitely well.
I was saying those big, long words like Shenandoah and Potomac and Harper's Ferry and all of that, they're so significant. I hope you enjoy studying history. I hope it becomes a big thing with you. And it always was with me, so I always read all the history books. Enjoy.
Thank you again for coming. So now we'll carry on with the Americana that we do weekly here in the city of Goodyear. And we'll move to the part of our agenda where anyone from the public who would like to comment to the council has an opportunity to do that for any subject which is not on this evening's agenda. I understand Mr. Gelsner would like to. Do you have any cards?
No.
Okay. No, that's all right. I knew you didn't need one. You asked me.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Gary Gelsner of Goodyear. Two weeks ago, I appeared before the council to comment on an unsafe situation on Pebble Creek Parkway. And I would like to report back that I had a meeting with the city superintendent of Public Works, the traffic engineer, and also had a meeting with our chief engineer. And I want to commend all three of those individuals for the electronic sign that is now on the northbound lane of Pebble Creek Parkway at about Harvard Street, Harvard Avenue, that is basically preventing crashes that may take place on that avenue. And I have heard from several of my friends who have expressed concern to me previously when I appeared and want to know why we hadn't done anything. And they're very pleased with that. And I've also traveled up and down that avenue several times, and I can speak statistically from, you know, one person that I've seen the traffic sign actually working to allow people to emerge safely in a professional way. And I'm very glad that I didn't have to bring the Maloney's down here to take care of any non-compliance by the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment on a non-agenda subject? If seeing none, we'll move to consent agenda. As the, first off, consent agenda items C, D, and E. C, D, and E are removed from tonight's agenda and are postponed until the 24th September council meeting. They are being post-removed at the request of the applicant. So I'd like to ask the city clerk if she would read consent items A and B and F through K by title only, please.
Item A, council will consider approving the draft minutes of a work session held on August 27th, 2007, and draft minutes of a regular meeting held on August 27th, 2007. B, council will consider accepting the dedication of right-of-way for a portion of West Commerce Drive along the Sun MP property frontage, generally located west of Cervel Avenue. Item F, council will consider approving a request from Greg Velely, representing EMR Golf Club LLC, for a person and location transfer liquor license for Astoria Mountain Ranch Golf Club located at 11800 South Golf Club Drive, Goodyear. G, council will consider approving the final plat for Astoria Commons subdividing 185 acres, generally located at the southeast corner of Interstate 10 and Astoria Parkway, into 20 residential and commercial development tracks, and establishing access and utility easements necessary to facilitate the development of the Astoria Commons planned area development, subject to stipulations. Item H, council will consider approving the final plat of Sadea Parcel 4A subdividing 39.6 acres into 58 single-family lots, generally located at the southeast corner of Perryville Road and Campbell Avenue within the Sadea Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. I, council will consider approving the final plat for Sadea Parcel 48, 4B, I'm sorry, subdividing 37.2 acres into 79 single-family lots, generally located at the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Sadea Parkway, within the Sadea Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item J, council will consider approving the final plat for Sadea Parcel 4C subdividing 40 acres into 77 single-family lots, generally located north in the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Sadea Parkway, within the Sadea Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item K, council will consider approving the final plat for the gateway, Airport Gateway Business Center subdividing approximately 26 acres into 10 industrial lots, generally located on the west side of Litchfield Road, approximately 1,400 feet north of Yuma Road, subject to stipulations.
Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Could I have a motion, please, to approve A and B and F through K? Councilmember Holland?
I move that we approve consent items A and B and F through K. As read by the clerk.
Second?
Motion, Councilmember Holland, a second from Councilmember Lord. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass five zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to our business agenda. We only have two items on business this evening. First is a resolution for a memorandum of understanding, an agreement related to retail liner space, and Sarah Shilton will present.
Technologically challenged and directionally challenged, as I've just explained to mine. I'm here to talk to you about the agreement memorandum of understanding that we reached with Rose Properties Southwest and Eagle Tail Big Horn LLC for the development of retail liner space, which will be essentially the face of the city's baseball stadium. It's part of the whole concept of having an integrated ballpark where you have private development kind of integrated with our ballpark stadium and this kind of urban village concept. It's been a long, tough process, a lot of give and take on both sides. The city had some specific interests in protecting that Rose and Eagle Tail were receptive and worked with us to great detail. But just so you have an understanding of this, the areas highlighted in pink here will be the retail spaces. You'll see here is the team shop for the Indians, and then there's like a main electrical facility, maintenance property. But this will be the outside of our stadium. This is one of the entrances. And over here is actually, if you go this way, this is where city center is, about a quarter of a mile away. So the, one of the front entrances to the stadium is going to face sort of towards Astoria Parkway and be located very closely to city center. The city's concern with this project, although everybody's very excited about the concept of an integrated development and the concept of the urban village with the stadium as the centerpiece, the city had some particular concerns. We needed to ensure that we had an agreement that separated the private development to ensure that the city wasn't paying for the private development. We had concerns about this project delaying the completion of the stadium within the time frames that the city's committed. And we had concerns because we have somewhat of a loss of control over the front to the face of the stadium. And so those were the issues that we kind of hashed out and agreed in principle. There will be additional agreements that come out of this. But I think that we've done, you know, between the parties, we've addressed all of these issues as best we can. In terms of ensuring that the private development pays for itself and that the city isn't subsidizing, the construction of this, the development of this will be treated as a bid add-on to our construction contract, and all the costs will be kept segregated from the rest of the stadium. The developer, Rose Properties, will be paying for that in a percentage of completion. We've also received a commitment on their part to provide a letter of credit in the amount of the bid, so that in case there's some reason it's not completed, or we have to complete it, we're halfway through, we can draw on that letter of credit. That letter of credit will be to us by September 24th, because that's two weeks from today. And that is about a week before the final design plans are going to be completed. The other issue that we had had to do with the, well, we talked about the delay. There's a lot of provisions in this agreement that basically say, if we don't meet this deadline, if we can't agree on the design, that's acceptable to us and the Indians, you know, by September 29th, we stop and, you know, we'll go back and redesign it without the retail liner space. So throughout the agreement, there's many provisions that address the need that this, that the baseball stadium project be completed on time in accordance with our agreements with the Indians. There is another provision in this where I think we have talked to you previously about Rose's commitment to provide $5 million to kind of enhancements to the stadium. They are looking to use some of that and credit some of that enhancement money towards the facade of this retail space. They're looking to put some substantial money into this project to make it a very attractive project. And so some of the $5 million that they've committed will be, some of the cost of the facade cost for the storefronts will be credited against that. In terms of protecting the city against the loss of control, we have provisions that will require that easements, covenants, and restrictions like CCNRs, because we will share a common wall with this retail liner space. So we'll have CCNRs in place, and we've identified minimum requirements for those CCNRs in the MOU. So when the CCNRs are drafted and prepared, they'll include at a minimum the requirements that you saw in the COAC. Of primary importance was use restrictions. And basically, you're going to have a development where your patrons of the stadium are going to walk up, and the first thing that they'll see will be the retail liner spaces. This was probably the most difficult issue. Obviously, from our perspective, it would have been, you know, from the city's perspective, best case would be you could do this, this, and this, and this, very limiting in terms of the development. Again, the developer has, intends, and wants to make the best use of this property. They're putting a lot of money into this. But, you know, the hopes is that we'll get some tenants in there early on, and this will sort of jumpstart the rest of the development in that ballpark village area. So we had to provide some flexibility. The concept that we came up with is basically you can do what you see in neighborhood retail, except for a very extensive list of prohibited uses. Those were attached to the COAC, all of the uses that would not be allowed for. It's very extensive, some of them were ridiculous, but because it's like anything goes except, we had to be over-inclusive. So essentially, anything that you would see in any kind of strip center at this point, if it's not excluded, you could see it as the face of the stadium. Eventually, I think that the developer anticipates, because of the cost of this facility and, you know, its visibility, that it will attract higher-end. I think they would like to have smaller restaurants, but not chain restaurants. You'll see some chain restaurants to begin with. You'll see, you could see a Subway or something like that. But anyway, at some point, they're trying to see something other than the chain restaurants, the kind of more neighborhood restaurants that I think we'd like to see. But that'll probably be later. We've included requirements for the architectural standards. We'll know what the stadium looks like when it's designed. We'll know what the signs look like. We'll know what the facades look like. We'll know what everything looks like at the design phase. We have included provisions in the CCNRs that will prevent them, prevent Rose from modifying that, modifying the exterior of the ballpark without the city's approval. We had concerns about vacancies. Again, no one wants to see this vacant. Rose certainly has an interest in seeing that this is leased out. They've brought people on to do this. Terry Matula is here, and he can talk to you when I'm done about, you know, kind of their plans for this project and their visions, and the efforts they're making, substantial efforts in attracting tenants. But there is a possibility that it's vacant, so we have requirements for the storefronts and maintaining kind of those shadow boxes that will protect against just having vacant space there when the stadium opens. We have maintenance requirements, easement requirements, liability requirements. They have to indemnify us for various things. The other concept in here is this concept of using some of the public walkway that is to be dedicated for retail space. For instance, if you see a Starbucks, it'd be nice to have a little area out in front of there with chairs where people can kind of, people watch, drink their coffee. Restaurants that would do the same. That's kind of the concept. So what we've looked to do, we have 20 feet of, approximately 20 feet all the way around. It ranges from 18 to 20 feet. That would be dedicated for over, you know, very, very large sidewalk areas. We will dedicate back that portion that our city staff, our city engineer determines really isn't necessary for normal egress and ingress into the, ingress and egress into the ball stadium, because they're overly broad sidewalks. Our sidewalks aren't normally 20 feet wide. But we do have protections. If there are events and we anticipate heavy flows, we also have the ability to prevent that area from being used on event days. So I think that we've, you know, we've done what we can to protect the city with this, to move forward with this kind of innovative concept. I don't think that anyone else, certainly not in this state, has done this, making private development as part of your actual stadium. And we're hopeful of a very successful project. And I'll turn it over to Terry so he can kind of talk to you about what Rose looks to see here.
Mayor and council members, Terry Matula of Rose Properties. I've got a little larger illustration. And where's the zoom? The dark, I'll leave my pen. What Sarah had shown you earlier was the ballpark building which my pen is pointing to. And just don't need to repeat much of what Sarah had talked about, but I want to give you a little bit of a sense of the things, the activities that are surrounding the ballpark in terms of the other ancillary development, the other adjacent development that goes around the ballpark. The retail frontage, of course, is a major entrance to the ballpark village. When you come off of Astoria, the first thing you're going to see is the ballpark. It's probably going to be a dead giveaway, because there's going to be 100-foot and 120-foot tall light standards around it, so I don't think anybody's going to lose sight of it. But we're using HOK's design guidelines for the ballpark building facades, and we're going to work with them to enhance that. They've been doing a terrific job, and we're really happy about the way things are working now. Of course, the mayor and the council members, you've all seen the architecture of the ballpark that's been evolving. And so we're using that as a template. We're using the materials and the architecture, and we're trying to work with HOK and work with them to develop the retail enhancements that go with the ballpark, works in concert with the architecture. with the architecture, and it also works in concert with everything else that we're doing around the ballpark entrance, so to speak. To the south of the ballpark, we have a residential district. To the east of the ballpark, we're working with the convention center hotel concept. To the south of the ballpark, we're talking about a new office building complex in here. This is a residential district, additional residential district. These are retail districts and we're showing now temporarily the potential of the city's initial parking complement of the Thousand Stalls up in those areas. And along this frontage here, again, this is retail and boutique hotel that would overlook the ballpark. And again, the conference center hotel back on this side. We're at a point in the next 30 days where we'll be starting to really wrap up and tie together the rest of the design stuff. And I think shortly, we'll be working with the staff to have a little bit more of a broader picture unveiled to the mayor and the council. So I stand for any questions.
Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution 07-1180. Adopt a resolution approving memorandum of understanding with Rose Properties Southwest LLC and Eagle Tail Big Horn LLC concerning the construction, use, and operations of retail linear space that will be integrated with the ballpark.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt resolution number 07-1180 approving the memorandum of understanding between the city, Rose Properties Southwest LLC, and Eagle Tail Big Horn LLC relating to the construction, use, and operation of retail liner space which will be integrated with the ballpark. I so move.
I have a motion from Councilmember Susan and a second from Councilmember Holland. Now open for discussion. We'll start with Councilmember Susan and then go to Councilmember Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, the diagram that we're looking right now, it's up on the screen there. The dark area is primarily what we're talking about here, not what the gentleman just explained. Okay, that doesn't...
Yeah. This area in pink here is what we're talking about.
Because, you know, he mentioned hotels and when we look down the prohibited use, it's one of the things that isn't permitted in that particular area.
Right. No, this agreement addresses only the uses of this retail space that will share a common wall with the stadium.
Right, okay. You know, Sarah, you opened up by saying "as best as we can," and that kind of statement concerns me. What did you mean by that?
Well, like I said, you know, the best-case scenario from the city's perspective for uses, for use limitations, is to say you can put these five or six uses in this space and then anything else you would have to come back to the city council for approval. From Rose's perspective and our own economic development, people agree that is very restrictive and isn't really a manageable solution in terms of getting the space leased or sold to end users. And so that was one of the issues that we kind of struggled with in terms of trying to come up with a solution that was feasible from Rose's perspective so that they could actually lease this space and provided the city, the protection that they needed. Otherwise, I think we managed to cover all of the other issues to protect the city.
Okay, so you're comfortable with it?
Yes.
Okay. You know, the prohibitive listing is enormous.
Yes.
And the things that I came to mind as soon as I looked at the listing, they're there.
Yes.
Like back to parlors, et cetera. And that was important to me, but, you know, a page and a half of restrictions is pretty...
Yes. And again, it had to do...
Pretty collective.
Yeah, had to do with the approach that we used. If it was open to everything but, then we had to put everything that we would find offensive, you know, to have citizens or patrons of the stadium walking up to see. So, you know, I don't think we missed anything, but, you know...
I don't think you did. Nothing that could be detrimental, anyway, to the park itself.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Councilmember Holland?
Just a question about the concept. It's been successful in other stadium areas, not in our state, but in other stadiums. I mean...
I don't know. I don't, I think this is an unusual concept. I think that there may be professional stadiums that are like downtown stadiums. I think in downtown San Diego, Baltimore, certainly, I don't think that this has been done with spring training facility. Brian, do you know of anything? But it's kind of the, part of that whole concept of having an urban village, you know, kind of with the baseball stadium as your centerpiece and your attraction.
I guess what got my attention was just the fact that we could end up with something sitting empty and that kind of bothers me.
Yes, that is a risk. And what we did try to do is, you know, ensure that you have changing of your displays and making sure that at least what you have is attractive.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Lord?
Well, I want to thank you and appreciate your negotiation ability. As reading through this, I put on my realtor hat, my citizen's hat, and my city council's hat and looking at the outside facade and what's going on there because it's important to us because this is really the first structure probably is going to be built in the city's, close to the city center if you want to say this is part of the city center. And so I think you've done a great job on it. As I read through it, I kept thinking, oh, she's going to miss this and that, but you really didn't. You held your feet to the fire. And how best you, Terry, but I know what a strong group the Rose Corporation is and I know how they want things a certain way. And I think that you did great compromising in certain areas so that you were able to extend this and make it happen. But I think I see, through my eyes, I see lots of protection for the city and especially, Brendan, where you're talking about those empty buildings by having signage restriction and having to change the fronts. And they really, I think you've done the best you can at that point.
Yeah. Now, our two risks are the uses, uses will be there and the vacancies. I mean, that is it?
Yeah.
Councilmember Osborne?
Okay, so the theme seems to be our face should be a happy place, right? So on that, going over these uses, the prohibited uses, I just want to clarify a couple of thoughts. So if Randy, the big unit Johnson, decides to come in and he wants to open up a Randy Johnson's outfield restaurant or slash sports bar, according to this, would he not be allowed? I don't know what a sports bar exactly comes up with in liquor sales. It says should not exceed 40 percent, so I don't know where that...
Yeah, we're looking more for, I don't think we want it as party central, so we're trying to find a balance that has more, a higher percentage of food sales than just bar sales. I don't think you want it all filled with bars. You might actually get that right away. But, but yes.
If Randy couldn't have his space.
Unless he's, if he has...
He's selling more food than...
Yes, if he's selling at least 60 percent of food.
Okay. Then the amusement or video arcades. So if a Jillian's or a GameWorks wanted to come in, they would be, and that would be a user that would always, you wouldn't have a vacancy with a user like that, so...
Yes, and it would be, they would be prohibited. And I don't think you want that user right there, right in the front of your stadium because of, you know, vandalism, because you'll have a lot of kids and a lot of, you know, you just have a lot of young kids. I mean, if we had a movie theater, you'd have the same kind of thing.
Sure.
So...
It should be out of baseball park.
Except when baseball parks close, this still goes on.
Well, right, right. But, and that's why we have the other retail areas that could have...
Right, they could put all of that, that is all acceptable in their PAD, all of those uses. And the other limitation is just from a practical standpoint, these are relatively small spaces.
I meant to ask you that, actually.
So, I think the largest is maybe 1,800.
Oh, wow. Oh, I would have answered that.
Yeah, so from a practical standpoint, you're not going to see those big users come in anyway.
All righty, okay. Just out of curiosity, say, the beauty salons, beauty parlors, barber shops, just because it's a funky thing to be there, is that why they're part of the list?
Again, I think it was just the, you know, what you'd like to see is the face, you know, do you want to see the, you know...
No, 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 that's fine.
And essentially, if they're going to build a convention center or a hotel, essentially, you would have some of those probably...
Oh, I expect you'd see some of that in some of the other areas because you're going to have residential. And that was where we started. At first, they wanted to, you know, build anything for the, in the retail space that they could have in their PAD, which is very broad. They said that's not going to work out because this is a little different, although it's zoned for that. If you want to make it as part of the city stadium, then there has to be some limitations on those uses. So all of those uses would be, not all of them, but most of those uses, many of the uses that are prohibited in there would be allowed in there, could be allowed in their PAD. And I would anticipate with having, you know, residential there that you'd see some of those service industries there.
You know, one last thing I was thinking of, and I don't know if you've addressed it or not, but like what's over there at West Gate, when they have a vacancy, you don't realize what's behind the big pictures that they have.
No, that's what we're, you know, that's what we tried to build in.
And you're headed to that, okay? It's very deceiving because you think, ooh, what's in here? And then you're like, that's...
And then you want something in there. It's your same, where does that come in? Yes.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. You know, I look at this from the standpoint of what we've been told, that this park and its surrounding area is going to be second to none anywhere in this country. And I think the protective lips guarantees that. And I think it's important for us to realize that the developers, you know, both within the ballpark and outside the ballpark, have come to that conclusion, that this is the place that this city wants it to be, second to none throughout the country.
Once this gets going, I think that you'll see some really more, some higher-end uses. I mean, you have to be prepared, though, that you could see, you know, a Subway there to begin with, you know, that you wouldn't necessarily associate with high-end use. But, you know, they're going to have to ramp up, but this is going to be a very valuable space. They've made, Rose has made a substantial investment in this. They're putting a lot of money into the facades. That's their goal. But obviously, if you can't get those high-end users because the stadium's not up yet and nothing else is out there, we're going to get what we can get to begin with. And then, you know, I don't know, you know, we don't have control over that, but I would assume that they wouldn't have really extensive leases, like lengthy leases, so that they can reevaluate where they are in the market.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just a couple of questions. Prohibited, does that mean no can do or does that mean no can do unless you specifically ask council?
Nope, just can't do it. So we're not coming back. And, I mean, I assume if, you know, obviously, any agreement can change. So if they had a use and we wanted to amend it, we could come back and...
So it could be amended?
Oh, yeah, any contract could be amended. So yes, if they had a use that they said normally we wouldn't like arcades or something, but this is a really unique kind of arcade...
Well, there is flexibility there.
Right. Well, it'd be through a contract amendment.
Okay. You know, retail, normally, they have their own trademark colors and there's sort of exciting colors. And yet, it's going to be in a stadium or ball field that it's going to have relatively limited coloration, one or two, and it's going to be subtle. Are we assured that these buildings are going to meld into that or will some of those retail spaces, will they meld into the stadium color or tone or may they differ from that significantly?
I haven't been involved in the design process, but my understanding is we have veto rights on the design, including the sign packages. So to the extent that, you know, we want, you know, we don't want the neon signs, you know, pink and purple neon signs flashing, you know, that that would be part of the original design. And then once the original design is set, they can't really deviate from that without asking for, without getting the city's approval for that. But I don't know what their intents are. Terry might be able to speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the, yeah, the specific intent is to use HOK as the direct sounding board for the architecture. We've given them a lot of feedback in terms of what, you know, was appropriate for retail uses. They're integrating all of that stuff so it ties into the architecture of the ballpark buildings, so to speak. Just to kind of give you an idea of how to create that excitement and that kind of energy that you would have with a retail environment, keeping in mind that you're only 100 feet away from other retail buildings. Simple things like if you had, as you recall, I think some of the material lists for the ballpark building and the development complex is Corten Steel, which is that kind of a rusty metal look. Well, you can get that in a perforated metal and if you can put things behind it, so at night, you could actually see, for example, a media presentation behind that perforated metal. You turn it off and then it just has this nice color rendition that ties in with the architecture of the building. So that's a very complicated thing to work through in terms of architecture, but we intend to have that kind of a drawing package ready here shortly to present to staff and if necessary, bring it to the council.
Yeah, I guess just briefly, I would prefer that the color for the retail users meld into the character of the overall structure.
Absolutely.
And last item, I guess it's for you, Terry, on your other chart.
Oh, yes.
It was said that this is not party central. So where is party central? Where are people going to go in the evening and have a party?
I'll, I, this is party central.
Is that the outside area is there or is it a parking lot?
Well, it's, it's very hard to get the scale of this, but this street here is what we're calling Plaza Street, and that's only a title to kind of connotate how it's being designed. That Plaza Street is about 150,000 square feet. The ballpark team, Goodyear Baseball and HOK, they're working around this as a kind of a playoff of a famous place, Yankee Way, in Boston. If you've ever been there, it's a very compact, very funky, old urban environment. And here, we're talking about an outdoor space that can be used for even a basketball tournament, a music concert series. You can close off the street on both ends. We're talking about different ways to organize those types of urban environments. And then at the first base line and the third base line, there are two big, large plazas. I think they're probably in the order of 50,000 square feet, almost an acre in size. And those areas are there, are there specifically for, I'll call them congregation areas for ballpark events. So if you're inside the ballpark and there's, and you want to have a brat and a drink, you can go up to the plaza areas. You could actually go out into the Plaza Street before the ballgame and participate in all types of activities that Goodyear Baseball is going to bring there for baseball events. With private activities, we're going to do the same thing. We're going to program those exterior areas so that there is kind of a festival atmosphere. And all of the architecture is going to be playing off of the materials and colors that you see in the ballpark building itself.
I guess you could relate that to, let's say, the Chase ballpark right now.
Yes.
That the ticket area and then the restaurant areas, the crossroom.
Yes.
By that concept.
Yeah. In fact, HOK, I think, called it basically the cutting edge of, you know, sports facilities development when they were, when we initially started talking with them about it. But there are a number of smaller ballpark facilities across the country that are starting to do this. The larger ballparks, when you're trying to handle 40,000 people, it's a much different problem than handling 10,000. It's not four times as many people. It's, everything is, you know, 10, 15, 20 times larger. So it's, the crowd control becomes more of the problem and that's why those facilities are so spacious on the concourses. I know at Petco Park, they literally ran out some of the plaza areas for corporate and special events. The city runs out some of the plaza areas for municipal events. And you feel like a little munchkin in this giant facility. Here, it's much different. This is much more intimate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Could I have roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Susan?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 5-0.
Okay, thank you. We'll now consider modifications to the community park master plan in Estrella. Neil Barton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. See if I can work the technology here. As you can tell, mayor and council, this is the existing master plan that you approved back in 2004. Tonight, I'm up here requesting the council modify that approval from this previous master plan to accommodate, let's see, this modification that we're asking for is to insert an irrigation pond into the northeast, northwest corner of this existing park. This is a conceptual showing you that, as we talked about, in the northeast, northwest corner, I'm asking for that modification to be done. This pond will allow sufficient supply of water to irrigate the fields for the, for the whole park, not just phase one or phase two, it's for the complete build-out of this Without this irrigation pond, we cannot assure that the demand of the water that we'll need will be available for our park, as well as the other users that actually are dependent upon the same water that we're looking for, which include the high school and the current golf course up there. Also included in this action is a budgetary amount, an estimated amount of $350,000, so we can actually construct this pond in phase one, which we are obviously in construction and started in July. I will bring it to your note that in the council forum here, there was a typo by my part where it shows 200,000. It's really 350 is what I'm asking. The funding's already there, and we're fine, and we're ready to go upon your approval.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for anyone from the public who'd like to come in? In case seeing none, could I have a motion?
I, I knew we'd authorize a recommendation, modification of the master plan for the Cuny Park located adjacent to Australia, the Fort Hills High School, and authorize a change order for phase one construction of this irrigation pond.
Okay. Motion from councilmember Lord, and a second from councilmember Sousa, it's open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You, I, and Councilman Cavalier, we had a presentation last week relative to this, and we're rather impressed with, with this modification. I think the replacement of this facility is going to provide a much more activity than what it is replacing. And from an irrigation standpoint, I think it's important for the entire park facility to have that pond as, as a, as an available source for the water throughout the, throughout the park itself. So I am for the modification and will vote accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I should add that today, we're talking strictly about this irrigation pond, and the other water features will be discussed next week in the work session.
That is correct. This is only as a placeholder to give you some type of orientation of where this pond would be located. To add a little bit more detail, the current conceptual design that we have come up with is about a quarter acre, actually, I'm sorry, a half acre surface area of the pond. It'll be close to 750,000 gallon volume, which will allow us a minimum of three days of use for our irrigation for the complete build-out of this park.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I can continue. There was a public meeting held at the Australia High School relative to this change. I understand it was substantially attended, and that there weren't any objections to it, and as a matter of fact, they greeted it with elation, so.
Yes, that was, that was last Wednesday, that's correct.
For the comments?
I'll save mine for the work session, thank you.
Okay.
We are going to approve the pond tonight, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably going to look better than a skate park there.
Just specifically about the pond, I think it's a great idea and definitely support it, but I do want us to keep in mind that just because there's a pond there and there's water there, that we really need to be conservative about our water, and so I made a big deal to Brian, I've got him looking into artificial turf, so we don't have to use as much water coming from that pond.
Absolutely, and, and your, and your concern and your topic is absolutely going to be addressed. When we actually go into designing a phase three, where we'll be actually adding additional turf to these facilities, artificial turf will obviously be a concept that we'll look into.
Right, that's what I wanted to hear, and thank you, so I'll definitely support this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by standing in line, please.
Aye.
Close, the ice has it 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to comments and report on current events by mayor, council members, staff. Yep, okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Sousa?
Mr. Mayor? I would publicly like to thank you for your efforts in MAG, in acquiring and moving along the construction of the I-10 highway. I know that there, you know, that you were subject to some controversy, and during the course of this action, I took exception to that. I was certainly upset by some of the comments that were made by our neighbors and members of the MAG committee. However, I guess we have to swallow a bitter pill, but keep in mind that we were going to be responsible for a substantial amount of money when we voted to accept and pay the total $10 million. We do have $7 million, and from that amount, we're going to be subject to making up a difference of, or paying our part of it, which is $1,800,000, as I understand, the latest figure, and a minor share being shared by, if their councils vote on it, by the two cities that were originally involved in our IGA, which I feel should be held as an important document, contrary to what has been said, that there's no binding to it. I feel that by, just the honor itself is binding. We voted on it as three communities, and I feel that that is important. If we don't, if it's not, then I think all IGAs from here are in, are in, in an area of concern to me. So I appreciate what you've done, and I think the council is as well, since we voted 6-0 on it to accept it at our, at our last meetings. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick update on that, since you started running up, it is 1.5 million that we have to pay, but it's absolutely, and I want to compliment the council for voting to approve anything above six, and so we're ready to go as a city. The other two cities, however, if they vote subsequent to 17 September, which is Monday, I guess, or 21 September is when the state board is going to meet, if the state board does not have a report in from those two cities confirming their, their agreement with these provisions, then this road will be delayed, and whether it's late a couple weeks or more, we can't accept that, frankly. That's inexcusable, the road is too dangerous, the people need it done right away, and I'm sure that their two cities will, will agree to meet if necessary in a special session to get their councils to support this, this agreement by MAG, and so that on the 21st, the state board will have no reason not to move ahead with vigor and approve this. I've been told by ADOT, their, actually Victor Mendez, their boss, that he needs about a week to bid. That being true, this could be out for bid before the end of the month, assuming that the other two cities respond quickly, and there's really no reason not to do this. This is, this is a subject that we've adequately negotiated, adequately discussed and argued, the points are well understood by virtually everyone now, and we need to move, so. Okay, mayor, your summary?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have three brief information items, and then also follow-up as well. First announcement is the city's going to host the very first Kids Unite, and that's in parentheses, Kids Unite Walk is Friday, September 4th. It begins at 5:00 PM in our Goodyear Community Park, Litchfield and Thomas Road. The Kids Unite Walk is organized by our eight-year-old resident Joshua Dass, Dass, excuse me, and family, and its purpose is to find a cure for leukemia and to support those with the disease. There'll be activity booths, crafts, snacks, and a few guest appearances from children's movie characters, so wanted to announce that to the public, and that will be this Friday. The second item is, and it's been out there a lot, but just as a reminder to the public, is next Monday is a groundbreaking for the Spring Training Facility, Goodyear Ballpark Development Complex. It starts promptly at noon over at, just south of Yuma, and just slightly east of Australia Parkway, where we had a media event there some months ago now, but it's a, it's a big event. Mr. Bob Feller, Bullet Bob from the Indians, will be joining us. The Indians themselves will have representations. Desert Edge Band has been playing and practicing hard to be part of this event as well. So the other thing is, we'll be unveiling the architectural renderings of the two different facilities, so it's, it's a big day for this community. The third thing, and just as more of a note to council, next Monday evening, I'll be out of the, out for a conference over in Scottsdale, so Jim Nichols will be sitting here for next Monday's work session, so I wanted to let you know that as well. The one follow-up item I had, goes back to the work session, what council, or what staff will be following up on, are looking at how we may start the graffiti program, abatement program, a bit sooner. We'll look at contract employees potentially, and we'll look at an ability to move forward with replacing some of our existing approved positions as well. So once we go through that analysis, we'll bring that back before council, let you know how best we can proceed. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's all.
Thank you. Just, and I hate to voice people's time, but this is important. Bob Feller is, is a big name in baseball. I mean, Sporting News rated him as one of the top 35 players in the history of the sport. He was rated the greatest pitcher of his time. He interrupted the prime of his career for four years in service in the Navy. This is a person you want to come out and visit, because he's singularly important, actually.
88.
88, yeah. Okay, any questions upstairs? Meeting for Jaren, thank you.